All right, everyone. It's 6:30. Let's get this thing going. So noting the hour in the presence of a quorum, I call the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee to order. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting online may use Acton TV's YouTube channel, which is found at the top of the agenda. The meeting is being recorded and will be posted on Acton TV's website at actontv.org. It is great to have everybody back here. Yay, because I think we have folks we didn't get to see last week, so this is awesome. Welcome back. Today, we get to hear from DMG Group, and they're going to bring us up to speed on everything that's been going on, and that is actually going to be a fixture of the first meeting of the month for us for the foreseeable future. And that's good, because that's going to help keep us all up to date and give us the opportunity to ask questions, which is a good thing. And then we are going to actually end our meeting upstairs with some workshopping. We are going to get up out of our seats and do some writing and some thinking together and work on developing our school committee goals for the year. So with that, do we have any public participation? I see a head shake from John. All right. In that case, Peter can continue to the superintendent's update.
All right, great. Thanks, Tori. So one of the nice parts about being in Acton-Boxborough is when we welcome educators back, and we actually do some, we start our year with staff recognition. And two of the things we do, one is we call up any educator who has earned professional teacher status, which means they're entering their fourth year in the district. And the Acton-Boxborough Education Association recognizes all of them with a pen in a ceremony that they do with all staff. And then we also recognize all of our educators who hit 30 years. So I just want to give a shout out to all of them. There are too many to read everyone's name, but that, just want to recognize that, you know, we had a number of staff achieving those different milestones this year. Just want to call everyone's attention to potential job postings that members of the community might be interested in. We are seeking some community help. We are pleased to be almost fully staffed at the start of our school year in classroom teaching positions. However, we do continue to have several openings in our classroom support and operational support positions. All of them are important roles in our school. Specifically, we have openings for special education assistants, both full and part-time, high school Spanish teacher, and a high school reading teacher. So we would encourage interested members of the community to consider applying for the positions, and we have information on our website. A number of our positions may also be suitable for college-age students who might be going to school part-time in the community, and then obviously substituting over breaks and things like that. We always welcome college students back. So we will be sending word out where people can get more information. Kelly's Corner update, you know, there continues to be construction at Kelly's Corner. I don't have specific details of what is planned in the next week, but I do know they are working their way through paving. I do believe at some point in the next week, they will be out in front of our campus. That is an important project for the community. You know, we are working with the police to make sure students are safe. We do recognize, though, that we are hearing some family concerns, where there are students trying to cross actually at Kelly's Corner right now, and the signals aren't working. So we do want to just encourage our families to exercise caution when deciding whether or not to have students crossing there alone. It may be that there's a brief period of time here where parents want to make sure that, you know, age-appropriate kids are supervised in that area. Tori and I have our first community coffee of the year coming up on Tuesday, September 22nd at 7 o'clock PM. That is a virtual meeting, and we will send a link out closer to that date. That is an opportunity for our families to hear kind of beginning-of-the-year updates from us, and also a great opportunity for them to pepper us with whatever questions are on their mind. And I have guaranteed them it will be an entertaining time having Tori answer all of them. We will pass along to families, the state annually asks us to just pass along information on the E911 program, so we are including that in the update. I'm not going to go into it tonight, but I do want to just share some highlights from each of our schools. As you came in, on the opening slide, I did share, you know, some photos from each of the schools, scrolling through, so hopefully you got a chance to see some of those while you were coming in. But here's some highlights that principals have shared with us. Over at the Carol Huhbner Early Childhood Program, during Staff Professional Days, they participated in activities learning about positive psychology and relationship building. During orientation, parents and guardians and students had an opportunity to meet the CHCP staff and explore toys, learning materials, and play in the classrooms with their children. Students participated in circle time, story time, and learned about classroom jobs and routines during the first days of school. And the rain did hold off long enough for our students on their first day so that most of the classes were able to play outdoors on the playground. Over at Blanchard, their theme this year is stronger together, and they welcomed many new staff. This was a big hiring year for Blanchard. They had a lot of big retirements of people who'd been in that community for many years. And so the new staff have been embraced by the new school community and with energy and curiosity. And really exciting for Blanchard and Boxborough, they had their ribbon cutting on the new playground space last week. So that is really, really exciting for everyone. Conan Elementary School, the entire staff actually participated on a professional learning workshop focused on neurodiversity. The Conan kindergarten orientation and new family orientation events were very well attended as well. And then this year, the students and staff at Conan School represent 42 different languages. So really impressive community. Douglas Staff Professional Learning focused on the importance of creating a sense of belonging for each other, students and families. They welcomed many new staff members and students to our Douglas community, similar to Blanchard. This was a big year for Douglas in hiring. And Doug the Eagle made another appearance on the first day of school, welcoming all students back from the boardwalk. So I've heard. Over at Gates Elementary, students spent their days getting to know each other. Lot of focus on morning meeting and routines. That is part of our SEL structures that we have in schools to support students' social-emotional learning. Students have also been learning classroom routines and all of the school expectations, and students definitely enjoyed their first day of recess on Thursday, seeing everyone spend time on the playground. At McT, they welcomed 24 new students and new staff members, so that was very exciting, in addition to their kindergarten, obviously. They gave their kindergarten students their traditional white carnation that they receive on the first day of kindergarten, and then they actually get the same flower, not the dead one, but a fresh one, when they graduate at the end of 6th grade, too. So that is very exciting for McT. Student work on team challenges to know how to learn, to work together, generate ideas about classroom agreements. And every class works on classroom agreements during the first few weeks of school that align with school-wide expectations of be safe, be kind, be responsible. That is also part of their responsive classroom structures and part of our SEL structure for the school. At Miriam, Staff Professional Learning focused on inclusion and belonging, setting a positive tone for the year ahead. Classrooms are alive with excitement and collaboration. Students are working together on projects, games, and activities, and celebrate connection and community. And the youngest learners are already showing independence and confidence as they navigate their new classrooms and school routines. Over at RJ Gray, they implemented that new schedule that we talked about during last year's budget season, so they successfully launched seven teams instead of eight, and they want to make sure that they also acknowledge they appreciate everyone's flexibility in the early days of the school year and getting that launched. They welcomed 30 new 7th and 8th graders to AB over the summer, in addition to their 6th grade class, and they have been thrilled to get to know the 13 new staff members that joined that community this year. At the high school, they welcomed about 200 staff members back to the building on August 25th, two days of professional learning and celebrations of community, including some of the certified staff who had reached the 30-year-of-service mark. The high school had a successful 9th grade orientation on Wednesday, August 27th, with nearly 400 9th graders and many 11th and 12th graders coming back as ambassadors. We always appreciate our upperclassmen coming back. The day was filled with students visiting classes, meeting teachers, counselors, assistant principals, along with an assembly, a student experience panel, a class photo, and team games. And after a week of school, high school students are now deeply engaged in the new classes, looking forward to homework, no, excuse me, looking forward to many upcoming community events. That's what I meant to say, including the Student Council's first-ever movie night, which is happening on Friday night, and they are showing The Greatest Showman on Leary Field this Friday, September 5th, from 7 to 9 for our high school students. And that is sponsored by the Student Council there. So great to see some really community-building events happening at the high school and thinking about kind of the overall student experience.
Awesome. Any questions or comments for Peter?
Hooray for movie night.
All right, thanks. Alrighty, in that case, we are ready for our presentation, and I'll invite Joe Costello from DMG Group to come on up and catch us up on everything they've been up to, which whatever's next. So think about the questions that you think are most important to ask first, and we'll see how many we can get through. Sound good?
Yep. I'm going to actually be your driver. I'm going to put up the slides here, so.
Terrific. Well, as Peter's pulling that up, it's nice to see all of you again. I hope you all had a wonderful summer. Very excited to be able to share a few different things with you. Number one, a process update on all of the work that has been happening over the summer with both the Working Group, as well as the AB Forward Steering Committee, really the main drivers of the work that we're doing with you all related to strategic planning and district reorganization. And then really, we'll spend the majority of our time talking through the specific findings from our needs assessment, our diagnostic analysis, which was a deep dive into all things Acton-Boxborough Regional School District, understanding the current state of affairs with how schools are currently organized, how changes in enrollment and demographics have played out across the district, what that means in terms of student outcomes. And then really some deeper questions about how the district might allocate its resources differently and design its programs and systems a little bit differently to really cater to the evolved needs of students. So that's really the goal of our time for today, and we'll save about 20 minutes or 30 minutes or so for your questions and feedback, so we can make sure that we're answering any questions or reflections or concerns you may have. So with that, we'll go through just a quick project process, goals, and methodology in terms of our, next slide. So went through the objectives for today. So again, share findings, and really, we'll spend the majority of our time on that first objective, saving some time for discussion, and then we'll clarify some really specific next steps for how we're going to move this work forward. So where we are at in this process, we're still really in the second phase of work. So we just wrapped up conducting that diagnostic, and we shared the learnings from that diagnostic in our last steering committee meeting about a week and a half ago. And we saved time for discussion with that steering, with the steering committee. And then during that meeting, we started to workshop some of the initial draft language for the strategic plan. Again, our goal here is to have a really strong strategy in place before we dig into options for reorganization. Now, my team has been quite busy over the summer to understand the ins and outs of the district, understand the operational details, the specs of different buildings, things like that, so that as soon as the strategy is in place, the language from that strategic plan is in place, we're able to use that information to design some reorganization scenarios with the steering committee that will then go out to the community for confirmation, validation, and all sorts of feedback. So, and you can see where we're at in terms of our general process there. So again, our last steering committee was on Monday, August 25th. We're going to be meeting with the steering committee again on September 9th, really to confirm that strategic plan language, so that we can then take that strategy and use it to design some really actionable, worthwhile options for the district to consider for possible reorganization. So we'll be coming back together as the steering committee October 7th to discuss those specific options, and then that will allow us to then go out to the community to get feedback on all of those different options through a variety of focus groups, surveys, additional community meetings, really as many opportunities for engagement for all the people of Acton-Boxborough to be able to weigh in on these specific options. And then we'll come back together, distill the insights from all of that feedback, workshop the options for reorganization that will then be presented back to you all in early December. So that's really where we stand right now. So we had quite a busy summer, doing all sorts of data analysis, drafting preliminary language for the strategic plan, so that we can dig in this fall for options for reorganization and really re-engaging the community in that work. Terrific. So in terms of our diagnostic findings, really, the goal here was for us to get a clear-eyed outsider's view on the current state of affairs in Acton-Boxborough Regional School District. So this is a needs assessment, and in terms of the way we structured this needs assessment, Peter, next slide, there were really three main themes that emerged to us that we used to structure our analysis and really pull out the key insights for the community. Number one is starting with, or number one is evolving student needs and enrollment across schools. So thinking about over the last 10, 15, 20 years, how have the needs of students in Acton-Boxborough changed, and how have the needs of students really gotten distributed out to all the different schools in the community? And then from there, understanding student outcomes and well-being, and really the impact on staff members. So we know that a lot is invested in the public education system in Acton-Boxborough. We wanted to pull up the stats that really tell that story. And then the last portion, understanding district finances, operations, and long-term sustainability. So again, these three chunks serve as the architecture for our full diagnostic findings here. Now, the first portion of this, I just wanted to give a quick overview of really the executive summary of our findings. So we're not hiding anything. It's all out in the open here, just to really tell the story of Acton-Boxborough Regional School District. So a few key points that I want to highlight across those three chunks of information. The first, related to evolving student need and enrollment across schools. First is that enrollment has declined significantly. Students have grown more diverse, and the needs have increased. And then when you look at how those needs have changed across the school district, there are actually significant variations in the composition of need at each school, largely driven by the district's policy for enrollment. So we'll get into how that actually works and how that's playing out in different schools, but a really important connection there related to the design and the execution of that, of that policy. And then really importantly, the Acton-Boxborough community is torn on open enrollment. That came through loud and clear in our survey. And some key points related to that, there's this feeling of inequity and fueling misperceptions about the actual differences between schools. Moving into student outcomes and well-being and staff well-being, the headline here, academic results in Acton-Boxborough are excellent. You work really hard, your educators work incredibly hard, and they deliver those results while spending below the state average and on par with peer districts. However, as we dig into those data points a little bit more, there are some persistent and significant gaps in performance across student need groups. Again, we'll get into exactly how that looks across different student need groups, but wanted to start with that. And then a key point there, in terms of how the needs of students are evolving, the data shows that educators are reportedly stressed and struggling to both meet the increased needs of students, as well as the increased demands on what it means to be an educator today. Again, more to come there. And then in terms of the headlines for finances, operations, and long-term sustainability, key point here, over the last 10, or the last five years, actually, spending in Acton-Boxborough has increased pretty dramatically by about $16 million. And both towns have needed to increase local spending due to inflated costs, but then a really important change in how the state funds public education. So the amount of money that comes through Chapter 70 state aid and the methodology by which that funding gets distributed to the local communities has changed, which has shifted the burden on local taxpayers. And while the district has taken some really significant moves to balance the budget and made some really, really significant changes, there are still looming capital expenses and looming expenses that need to be addressed, and that may prove challenging to address and really set up some deeper questions about the trade-offs that the school district really chooses to make. So within that, we'll go through each of these sections, starting with that evolving student needs and enrollment across schools. But again, throughout all of this information, the main question that I want you to be thinking about is, how should Acton-Boxborough design its schools and programs to really meet the changing needs of students? Because at its core, this process is trying to do exactly that. So digging into this first section, as I mentioned before, enrollment has decreased over the last 10 years by about 10%. And as we look ahead to the next 10 years, enrollment is projected to continue to decline by an additional 4%. So we looked at all sorts of demographic data that digs into exactly how and why that is and how it's playing out across the two towns. And while total town population is actually projected to increase, the data shows that that is due to actually an aging population and not growth in the population of school-aged children. And while the total number of students has decreased, the needs of students have actually increased according to the data. So here, you can see a few key categories that we typically show related to public education. The first on the far left is the increased percent of multilingual learners. And this is broken down into two categories. The darker blue FLNE is first language, not English, and then EL is the actual designation for an English learner based on their English language proficiency. So you can see an almost 1.7x, almost 2% or 2x increase in terms of multilingual learners. Another category, students who are from economically disadvantaged, has increased by almost 4x, from 4% to 16%. And then in terms of the change in race and ethnicity from 2015 to 2025, about a 30% increase, 1.3x increase in students from Asian, Hispanic, multirace, non-Hispanic, Black, other Native American, Hawaiian, et cetera. So an increase in the diversity of the student body in Acton-Boxborough. Interestingly, something that comes up a lot, while the percent of students with disabilities has remained roughly flat at about 16%, the needs of students have grown more complex, especially behavioral needs. Now, taking a step back, thinking about how the district currently configures or organizes its schools, you have a fully regionalized model at the secondary level, which means all students go to the junior high school and then to the high school. So those schools roughly represent the changing demographics of the community. However, there's a different approach for your elementary schools, as you all know better than anybody else, right? Six elementary schools that offer differentiated and structural approaches and models, school and educator autonomy, and there are some nuanced differences between schools, both real and perceived. I think a really important point there. Sometimes the perceived differences are actually a little bit greater. And this model for elementary education depends on this policy of open enrollment to determine how students get placed at individual schools. And one of the unintended consequences of how students end up in individual schools through this open enrollment policy is that the composition of student need at each school, or the composition of students at each school, does not represent the total, the demographics at the district level. So the data that you're looking at here, because there's a lot going on on this page, on the far left is the district averages. So the same information that I had shared previously. For 2015 to 2025, and then underneath that, SWD stands for Students with Disabilities, EL is English learners, again, that designation of students who require English learner services, and then ECD is economically disadvantaged. And then we have that same information for Blanchard, Conan, Douglas, Gates, McCarthy Town, and Miriam, all the way across. The number that you see, the percentage that you see on the left-hand side represents the actual percentage of students with those needs, and then the percent in parentheses represents the percent difference or the change from 10 years ago. So as you can see here, there are significant differences in the levels of need across schools, which is largely due to open enrollment policies and how students really end up in different schools. And this is really due to the process by which students are entering into that, the kindergarten lottery, and then basically, as there are more open seats or vacancies at schools that rank lower in that kindergarten lottery, as new students enter into the district, they get placed wherever those open seats are. Now, with this model of open enrollment, there are some intended outcomes or benefits for this model, as well as some observed challenges. So in our analysis and in understanding open enrollment models all throughout the country, there are some really terrific strengths and aspects of this model that work really well for the community. You can see a few there, a menu of schools with different focuses and teaching styles, which is a really wonderful thing, differentiation and variation, lasting school and family relationships, providing schools some level of autonomy to do things a little bit differently. However, there are some observed challenges with this kind of a model as well. Number one is that the differences between schools are highly nuanced, and sometimes the perceived differences become greater than the actual differences, where schools are quite similar in terms of the curriculum and materials that they're using, things like that. However, there's a perception that there are some larger differences between schools. There's also a concern that some school offerings may not fully align with some families' educational priorities, especially today, and then no guarantee of first choice for families. And many late enrollees, which is a really important statistic here, about 23% of elementary students are late enrollees. That means they enter into the district after the kindergarten lottery has happened. Those students and families have a low chance of getting into their preferred schools due to those limited spots. And then as a result, you end up with a mix of students, a combination of students who actively choose to enroll into a school versus students who are placed into a school, maybe leading to challenging dynamics for educators and families, because there's a mismatch in terms of expectations for how that school operates and how that school is designed to support students. And zooming out, thinking about how the needs of students have changed in Acton-Boxborough over the last 10, 15, 20 years, as student needs grow more complex, services may be really challenging to coordinate as students with differing levels of need are distributed across schools. This also creates some efficiency challenges as well, when you think about how some of those student needs could be serviced differently or more efficiently, and frankly, more effectively by regrouping students with similar needs into the same area. The information that you're seeing here are the themes that emerge from the community survey. And the community is very much divided and has different opinions about the validity of an open enrollment model. You can see the three themes that emerged on the positive side, the pro-open enrollment model there, really celebrating the unique identities of schools and the culture of schools, the push for community engagement, having this opt-in model where families are really leaning into the school that they believe matches the needs of their students and their families, et cetera. And, you know, not for nothing, there is an aspect of an appeal for the district. Families move to this community because they have the opportunity to opt into the school that they want. However, there were some concerns that came through in the community survey about the open enrollment model, some concerns about community separations, about how students and families may enroll in certain schools based on different cultures and different needs, et cetera, community divisions and inconsistencies, basically challenging this idea of having one common approach to elementary education, thinking about what some of the non-negotiables for elementary education should be, which is particularly important for students with more significant or complex needs. And then there were also some concerns or questions about financial inefficiency. Some key points here, there are some that are more perceptions than actual issues, like one that came through, there was a lot of concern about issues with transportation and how we could have a more efficient district by just busing students to geographically-connected areas. That's not a big issue for Acton-Boxborough, as you all know, based on how transportation is funded in this district. But in reality, there are opportunities to provide services a little bit more efficiently based on, in a different kind of enrollment model. So taking a step back from all of that information, how should Acton-Boxborough design its schools and programs to meet the changing needs of students? Thinking about what's the right blend of facilities, how you then design your programs and your schools within those facilities to meet the evolving needs of students, and then how do you design an enrollment policy that intentionally brings communities of learners together that leads to the strongest outcomes for students, staff, and families? The next section, I want to dig into student outcomes and well-being, and then making the connection to staff well-being. And as I mentioned before, the headline here is a good one. This chart that you're seeing represents all of the different school districts in Massachusetts. Each one of those tiny little gray dots represents an individual school district, and the placement of the dot is based on two different variables. The bottom, running across the bottom, is the per pupil expenditure based on 2023 figures, and then the relative height of each dot represents the percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations. And so again, the placement is each district's performance based on those two data points. And what this reveals is that Acton-Boxborough is in the top 5% of school districts while spending below the state average in Massachusetts, a really impressive accomplishment that a lot of other districts and communities could learn from, frankly. Yeah, much to be celebrated there. And this is just one data point. You can see some additional data points. And yeah, on the next slide, you'll see this structure come through in the remainder of our slides, really comparing Acton-Boxborough to some comparable districts. I have a slide later on that lists out all of those comparable districts based on a cohort of districts that... based on a cohort of districts that, that Massachusetts Department of Education compiles based on similar characteristics, wealth status, things like that. But you can see far and away, Acton, Boxborough outperforms the state and peer districts on all of these key metrics. Grades three through eight, M-CAS scores, I know that's, that's just one academic outcome. And there are a whole host of other, other academic outcomes to, to look at. College maturculation, also graduation rate, A B posts some really impressive results. And importantly, in elementary grades, the district has rebounded in M-CAS performance in math, science, but not in E L A. These stats are fairly consistent with, with other districts in terms of the broader trends. But starting to peel back the layers of, of these academic outcomes to dig a little bit deeper than, than just the headlines. And where we were particularly interested, because as we're reviewing this information, we're saying, okay, the, the needs of students in Acton, Boxborough have changed a lot in the last ten years. How have students from these different student groups performed relative to the average headline? And so three categories that I wanted to highlight for you. This is all E L A M-CAS results aggregated across all grades, where the, the line represents the percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations on, on the E L A M-CAS. And you can see there's a pretty significant performance gap for English learners. It's slightly smaller for students with an I E P than students with disabilities. And then that persistent gap exists for students from low-income backgrounds. So headline here, as the needs of students continue to change, continue to evolve and grow more complex, there's an opportunity for the district to think about how it's, how it's supporting or providing supports for students with, with different levels of need, especially as some of those needs are growing more complex. Additionally, I know one of the, the key areas that the district has invested in historically has been social emotional learning and wellness supports. There still are some persistent needs in this category. You can see the student survey, social emotional learning results from winter twenty twenty-four across those three questions for elementary, middle, and high school students. So still some, some pretty important data points for us to keep in mind in terms of the social emotional wellbeing of students. And while the, while those, those needs have, have been pressing in the district for a long time, the district has made some pretty significant investments in a few key areas in terms of S E L leadership and tiered supports, telehealth partnerships for mental health, and then S E L curriculum and advisory structures, actually, many of which Peter acknowledged and, and referenced in his, in his update earlier today. So some really important structures that are getting to the heart of supporting students' social emotional learning needs. But still an important point for us to keep in mind as we think about the broader set of needs for students. And then the other point that I wanted to, to bring in here is the, the, the impact on, on our educators. Now, with this data, a few, uh, just caveats and, and, and context points. This is outdated data from the spring of twenty twenty-two. So this is like in the midst of COVID, there's a lot going on. There have been a lot of improvements. However, in our conversations with district leaders and in the survey, the needs of educators was still bubbling up as a really important point to talk about. And so we felt that this was a really important data point to include in our, in our analysis here. So during the past week, how often do you feel stressed out, overwhelmed, or exhausted at work? Sixty-six percent were in that frequently or almost always category. And as we move into the next portion of our work, which is engaging educators much more deeply in focus groups and community meetings and, and the second round of the survey, we are very curious to understand from educators how different structures at the district level could lead to improving opportunities for educators in terms of reducing workload and reducing stress, reducing the demands on our, on our educators. So that's really why we wanted to include this data here. Because what came through in all, again, all of our conversations, all of our survey results is that the educators really are the backbone of, of this community. Educators are what makes schools great. Everybody in, in all of the survey results, whether they had concerns about the district or not, talked about how wonderful their children's educators were in terms of delivering really strong outcomes for, for students. And you can see the, the, this is again, summary from the, the, the community survey. What are the top three greatest strengths of our school district? You can see the, the trends, broader trends on the far right side. Academics, number one, one of the greatest strengths, but educators a close second. Fifty-seven percent of respondents listed teachers and staff as one of the greatest strengths of the district, far and away compared to all of the other categories there. So question for reflection here, slightly different from before. How should the district support its educators to continue to meet the evolving needs of students, right? You've, your educators and, and students and families have delivered really exceptional results academically. And a lot of really tremendous work has, has happened. And as the, the needs of students continue to evolve, how can the district really be a support for educators to continue to, to deliver really strong results for kids? Now, the last portion here, want to dig into district finances, operations, and long-term sustainability. And this is a fairly nuanced story. Again, as you all know, I know we've had conversations with each of you unpacking details here. And for folks listening at home, there's, there's a lot of important details to really get right. And so we wanted to start with this data, which shows how total spending in the district has changed over the last five years. As folks in this community know, the, the total spending in the district has increased by about sixteen million dollars. And part of the reason for that is because of the increased costs of running the district. And as I mentioned before, the changes to the district, or to the state's approach to funding education through that chapter seventy-eight, right? So the, the state is providing proportionally less funding to, to districts, or to some districts. It's just changed the, the formula by which funding is allocated out, which has, has led to the district needing to, or come up with more local, local tax dollars to really cover those same costs. And at that same time, though, the actual size of the district has grown smaller. And the district has made some pretty significant cuts to its total staffing levels to be able to balance that budget. So wanted to highlight some of those cuts here in terms of changes in staffing. So the, the bar that, or so the chart that you see on the right-hand side of the screen here shows the total budgeted staff in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. So school year's twenty-one, twenty-two, and then fiscal year twenty-six, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And you can see from, during that time, the district actually made eighty-six cuts in positions to be able to add back thirty-five positions, functionally shifting staffing around to be able to more effectively meet the, the evolving needs of students. So it's very, very difficult work and challenging, it's a, a challenging pill to swallow where total spending in the district has increased, and yet we're making cuts to our district. It's sometimes hard to hold both truths in our, in our, in our minds. We wanted to dig a little bit deeper than just that, though, to understand how spending has changed across a variety of different, different categories. So the, the categories you see here, running across the screen, are all of the different accounting codes functionally, or the, the accounting categories for how dollars are spent in the district. The vast majority of dollars going towards teachers and, and, and benefits, other teaching services. In fact, in Acton, Boxborough, similar to, to every school district out there, about eighty to ninety percent of total dollars are spent on people, because people are really what makes school districts run. But you can see all these other key areas. And you can see how some of these categories have changed over time. So increased cost of, of teachers and benefits, increased cost for labor and, and that other teaching services. That includes paraprofessionals. And then some other areas where some costs have actually gone down. Or I should say, spending has gone down, not necessarily costs. Now, what we wanted to do is understand how Acton, Boxborough compared to quote-unquote similar districts. And we opted to use the comparable districts that the Department of Education here in Massachusetts, so DESI, Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, which is based on two key factors by demographics, you can see those there, and by wealth. Now, if you're curious, any of you or folks listening at home, the links in, in, in these resources actually allow you to do similar kinds of comparisons yourselves. The, the data is, is really wonderful, would encourage you to dig into that to really understand differences in spending across communities. But this allows us to show how Acton, Boxborough performs or, or operates similarly or differently than similar districts out there. And then we know that this community has a long history of comparing itself to some very specific districts. So just wanted to name that, that here and provide the links to be able to, to run some of those comparisons. But on the, the next slide, we have the headline of, of how Acton, Boxborough compares to both the state and that very specific set of comparable districts. So below the state, seven percent below the state, and just marginally above comparable districts. And then digging into specific categories, we wanted to show, compared to those similar districts, what was really making up the difference in spending? So again, a lot going on on this slide. To orient you to this slide, starting on the far left-hand side, we have the average per pupil spending in comparable districts, so that eighteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. And then on the far right-hand side of the screen, we have the average per pupil spending in Acton, Boxborough. And then all of the purple and yellow bars in between show what's making up the difference between comparable districts, comparable districts in A B. And so what this shows is that A B is spending less relatively on operations and maintenance, slightly less on administration, and then more in all of these other categories with instructional leadership and pupil services being the, the, some of the larger categories. Now, a really important distinction here, the, the way this data is, is recorded, especially which positions belong in which categories, can be a little complicated, especially when you think about, you know, someone like Andrew Shen and all, all the things that he does, like which bucket do we want to put him in, something, something along those lines. So sometimes it's not a perfect apples-to-apples comparison. However, this is really helpful directional data to understand what is driving some of the key differences between Acton, Boxborough and similar districts. Similar data from before, really showing how Acton, Boxborough compares to comparable districts and the state across these key categories. So similar to, to other places, teachers and benefits really do represent the most significant chunks of, of, of spending, pupil services, other teaching services. And then you can see in, coded in green are the, the areas where this, the district is below the state figure. So about twenty-six percent below the ops and maintenance of this, of the, the average district in the state, and about twenty-three percent below the average, average spending for administration. There's, again, helpful directional data in terms of where the district should be investing its resources to really create the optimal system to get the best results for the community. And I'll just go through these last, last couple of slides very quickly. Just wanted to highlight basically some of the same data from before. So differences in administration, we included instructional leadership here just because those categories are very similar to each other. And the, the title of a, of a position could lead to it being placed in one or the other. And then that ops and maintenance piece. And then on the next slide, similar data, but looked at in a different way. So rather than looking at the total cost, this is actual, the actual staffing levels for some key positions, where the, the data that you're seeing on the left-hand side for each of these bars shows the F T E or the, the staffing level per one hundred students. So not the total spent on staffing, but the actual people, right? And then what that means in terms of the number of staff members supporting one hundred students. And this really shows the, the differences in the actual level of staffing the, the district is able to provide based on the, the salaries and benefits for those positions. So you can see that the district's below, so even though it was above in, in that leadership staffing, the, the salaries, it's actually below in the total staffing level. Same thing for clerical support and for teacher staffing levels. Going to highlight two different position types, just because there's such important pieces of the puzzle here. One, we called out paraprofessionals or, or teacher aides, just because it's an important category to look at, where it's a, a, a larger share than, than similar districts out there. So you see the, the level of staffing per one hundred students, where the, the district is above both comparable districts and the state. You can see where Acton, Boxborough fits in compared to other similar districts out there, where the placement of the dot corresponds with the dollar spent as well as the staffing levels. And then the other position that we wanted to highlight on the next slide is what this means for, for teachers, right? So we have on the far left side, the average teacher salaries in Acton, Boxborough compared to comparable districts and the state. And then some important data about how the composition of the, the teaching staff or the, the faculty in Acton, Boxborough has changed over the last five years or so, where the, even though the total number of teachers has actually gone down, average salaries have increased and staff is growing more, more senior, right? So it just sets up some, some important decisions for the district in terms of how it continues to invest in its educators. Now, the other piece to the puzzle here is facilities. So we wanted to lay out key data points for each of this, of the district's buildings, recognizing that two buildings house two, two schools each. And you can see the year that those schools were built, relative square footage, conditions based on assessment from, from the, the district and other district partners, and then current operating budgets. Now, an asterisk for the school year built is that even though some, some schools are, are on the older side, the district and, and individual towns have invested a lot in those schools. So those years may not totally represent how much work and how much money has been invested into those facilities. And then we specifically called out the, the Conan operating cost just because many people have been talking about Conan throughout this process. So we felt it was important to, to name that here. And on the next slide, you can see some of the additional projected expenses for each facility. So again, looking at the buildings, boardwalk all the way up to Conan, the projected planned expenses by schools, by, by each school for the next ten years. And so you can see there's a, a, a long list of things that need to be invested in across all different facilities. And there's a story behind each one of them. But really, the, 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 the main takeaway here, Conan has the, the largest total expenses needed to, to really bring it up to the level that's needed for the, for, for operating it. You can see some really significant, significant expenses at the high school for H V A C, heating, or some roofing expenditures as well. But this is really, taking a step back, on the next slide, just thinking about the, the larger sort of financial situation for the district, right? Where there are these structural revenue limitations in terms of the limited tax base, taxes, or total, total spending in public education has gone up and up and up. There are tax constraints in terms of how much taxes can go up based on Proposition Two and a Half, et cetera, shortfalls in state aid, but then some challenges on the, on the cost side of the house as well. So rising costs that are continuing to rise, we're not, it's, it's steadying off a little bit, but on, on the horizon, we're expecting costs to continue to rise. Also, the evolving needs of students require different kinds of services to, to, to support those needs. And then this challenge with, with aging facilities. On the previous slide, there's a lot that needs to be invested in. And so a really important conversation for the steering committee, and then later this group, is which, or where do we want to be investing our resources to really get the strongest results for our community more broadly? And so you can see some of the headlines there in terms of the unclear path forward cuts, significant cuts have already been made, ongoing cost growth, this question about what the future is going to look like. We included this, this like kind of combination quote on the bottom there, just because I think it captures really well the, the challenge that, that this community is facing, just the frustration, erosion in trust, this feeling of, of needing, of having to do less with less, which makes a lot of people nervous in terms of maintaining educational quality and morale across the district. So again, want to close with this, this key point, right? Where should the district be investing its resources to really create the strongest education program for students, recognizing there are a lot of different categories, a lot of different levers that the district can pull to create really strong education programs for its students? So let me pause here and, and turn it back to.
Thanks, Joe. Can we go back to slide forty real quick, please, Peter? Forty? Joe, can you define for us when you're talking about, all right, that was the wrong one? Uh, there's one about paras, paraprofessionals. Yeah, okay, that is the right one. Can you define what you were looking at when you say paraprofessionals, please?
Yes, exactly. So paraprofessionals is a, a category for non-certified staff members. So other names that, that are typically used are, are teachers, aides, assistants, positions like that. And an important distinction here, there's a, a, a difference between general education paraprofessionals and special education paraprofessionals. And actually, to go like way back, or not super way back, the one that shows the changes in staffing levels, slide twenty-nine, or, yeah, this one, right? You can see the shift from instructional support, so a reduction in those gen ed, general education instructional support to. education instructional support, to special education instructional support. So a really important distinction there where those positions are supporting students with, with disabilities or more significant or complex needs.
Thanks, that's helpful. We talked a lot about this last year, so I know people remember that conversation, just making sure we're using language that makes sense, alright? I already see hands in the air. We'll go around, Ben.
If I could ask, on slide number thirty-six, or page number thirty-six, you break down per, or I guess it's pupil services?
Yep.
Can you go into more detail what pupil services are? Is it paraprofessionals? Is it additional staff? It's not very clear.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And we can provide the detailed summary of exactly what is included in each of those descriptions, but yeah, it includes attendance, parent liaison, medical health services, transportation services, athletics gets included in there, school security, but, so a whole host of other, other sorts of costs.
Vikram?
Since we're on the slide, so you're saying that nineteen thousand, four hundred and eight includes transportation costs which are reimbursed?
Yes.
So once those are reimbursed, what does that number come down to comparatively with the eighteen, seven, forty-seven?
Ooh, that is an excellent question. I'll have to get back to you on the exact figure there.
Because does it come, is it still like a lot? Because now it looks like a huge amount of money, because we're not even talking a thousand dollars per pupil, obviously it adds up. But, you know, when you take the transportation costs into effect, does that really, you know, bring them almost even keel?
It, it, yeah. In terms of a proportion of that, I'd have to, to dig into the numbers to give you a specific answer, but you're right, it does, it does represent a significant portion of that chunk. That's a great, yeah, great point about what the, the actual difference between schools are, or districts are.
Okay, Adam.
So a quick, for Vikram, it should be normalized across all districts, so their transportation costs are included as well. So this is for a municipal versus a regional, that's the way the, the data gets sort of parsed out. So removing our transportation puts us at an unfair comparison to the comparable districts because they have their transportation in there.
But I mean, with all things being equal, if they're all being reimbursed, if you remove them all, no?
Then percentage is roughly the same of what we're seeing here. Joe, my question is on slide sixteen, and this is something that we talked about in the, in the steering committee as well, which is your, the data on no guarantee of first choice for families and roughly twenty-six percent of elementary students. That's twenty, sorry, twenty-three percent of incoming kindergarteners, right? And I think the district's got some more information, maybe Peter can clarify. When we look at kids leaving sixth grade or kids leaving twelfth grade, what percentage of those kids actually had a choice at which elementary school they went to?
So Andrew, I'm gonna try and clarify what I think Adam's question was and see if you can respond. The twenty-three percent of elementary students who are late enrollees, is that, does that include kindergarten who enroll after the lottery?
I believe it does. I think if you are a kindergartner who, say, moved into the district in June before kindergarten starts, but after the lottery, it does include that percentage. I'll double-check the, the memo that I wrote, but I'm fairly sure it does include that.
Sure, but I think the clarification I'm looking for is if I'm a third grader moving into the town, do I get a first choice? And, and I think the, the ultimate question is, by the time you've got a graduating senior, what percentage of those graduating seniors have gone through with their first choice of, of elementary school?
We had Joanie confirm the, my recollection of this, but the, the high school does senior exit surveys every year, and what they've come to see in recent senior exit surveys is it's about fifty percent of the senior class started after kindergarten.
Yeah, so for me, that's sort of illustrative of, well, open enrollment might be valuable, by the time you're leaving the district, it's, it's only been an important decision for about half the students in the district.
Correct.
Not a value statement either way about whether or not it's important, but I think it's interesting to understand that it's super important when you've, say, got a four and five-year-old, but when you've got a twelve or fourteen-year-old, obviously you don't, you don't have that choice anymore.
All right, Lisa.
Hi, so I wanted to inquire about methodology for the data analysis and more specifically the tools that were used?
Yeah, absolutely. Just broadly for all the analysis or for specific areas?
When aggregating and collecting the data, did you, to analyze the data, did you use AI, humans? Did you, how is, like, how is it, like, what types of tools or programs were used?
Yeah, terrific question.
Sorry, I had it too vague in the beginning.
Oh, yeah, okay. So for the survey results, we used a combination of human and AI. It was like, it's baked into the thought exchange program. We ran a bunch of very thorough tests to confirm the, the insights that we were pulling out, but we did use the AI capabilities that are built into that tool. For the financial analysis, that was all done by hand through Excel largely, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Yenchen?
Thank you. I have a question, so slides twenty-two, that was the chart for math, science, and EOA, and you had mentioned during the presentation that math and science seems to come back up, bounce back. EOA remain to be undesirable at the moment. I was just wondering if there's any correlation between the EOA performance of the district and the number of multilingual students that are now in the district but do not have sufficient support?
Yeah, the, the correlation is there. I think the question would be, I think there's, there's a lot more to unpack to really understand that correlation.
Liz?
I have one quick question about the student surveys.
Yes.
Since I think that a lot of the conversation's gonna be happening around elementary, I noticed that elementary, you know, from the winter student survey, they, they were kind of grouped. Were you able to capture all age groups of elementary? I'm just wondering like what ages we started at, because I can't imagine a kindergartner could answer all those questions.
Yeah, that's a, a great question. We use the designations from the, from the district. We can get back to you on exactly which, which grade levels were included in that student survey, unless, Peter, you can answer that right now.
I believe it's third through sixth. I, that, that's my best recollection. Andrew, I know you were here for that too. Do you remember when we did the SEL surveys with students, that was three through six? We, we can get more information on that, but that's my best recollection right now.
If it was through the panorama, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was three through six.
Okay. I was just curious because I wanted to make sure that it wasn't like just the sixth graders type of thing, to get the broader.
Oh, definitely wasn't just sixth graders, for sure. Whether it was three or four, I'm fairly sure it was, it went down to three.
Andrew?
Thanks, Tori. And thank you, man. Thank you for this. I know it's, it's comprehensive and it's the result of a lot of hours of work, and I do have a question. But I wanna make one thing to state. This is a data report, it's a really good data report, and it's one that can drive folks to conclusions, but it's not yet a report that's providing conclusions. It's one thing to think it's, and I think it's important to reiterate, reiterate this, that no decisions have been made regarding any changes to the district. And it's important for anyone listening to this discussion, anyone who's interested in this topic, that we state this. There's a lot of stuff, I hear it in the community, people that heard that this school's closing, or that that school were closed, or that there was a presentation that showed the plans, or that the schools converted to two to three, and three to five, and then six, and that the junior high's gonna move to the high school. Nothing's been cho, nothing's been done. It's important for us to be able to get that out, because it's in the public that we've already made our decisions, and we haven't. I, I think it's most important to reiterate, you've shown some great answers here. We're fiscally responsible, which is great. Thank you, Peter. We've got great outcomes, we've got great teachers, we've got some issues with some buildings, and that school choice is something we can talk about. But I also know that when it comes to these types of human qualitative research, biases appear in the people that come and choose to provide additional information. And my question comes, leading off of what Lisa mentioned, how do you filter for that kind of bias in this, knowing that most people will talk most about the things that matter most to them, which is usually when they want things to change for some reason or other? So in our analysis of the survey results, we were able to filter based on different demographics and different characteristics that people chose to respond to. Where we're at right now is we, there, there are, there's still work for us to do to make sure that the feedback that we get from the community is more representative. And so I'm excited for the next round of stakeholder engagement where we actually have, once we generate the options or scenarios for reorganization, we'll be able to use those as anchor points to get additional feedback from community members. And we'll continue to make sure that the feedback that we get is representative, using the tools in, in, in these different platforms to... I think it's important, the one data point you have up here is when you talked about the pros and cons of schools, of school choice, and one of them being the financial implications therein, and specifically the, the presumption that transportation was less efficient than it actually is, is I think a key component of understanding some of the misrepresentations that exist in the community and biases that are there, just as an example of that. Thank you.
Joe, can I jump in just to elaborate a little bit more on that? I think the idea of, you know, participation has been one that we've been thinking about a lot over the last couple of years, and what Joe and I have talked about is using some processes when we run focus groups, similar to what we did last year extensively, which is that, you know, a portion of the focus groups are open to individuals who are choosing to participate, and kind of on their own want to participate. But then we're also looking at about half of the members of focus groups are individuals where we randomly select out of the district, we just use a random number generator to pick people, and then we actually invite them to sign up for focus groups, so that we are getting both perspectives, because we, we actually need to value the perspective of people who care passionately about this, and we need to try and think about how do we expand the participation among all of our families.
Much like our elementary schools, there's a lot of nuance that goes into developing qualitative research. I appreciate that you're doing that.
Glenn?
Couple of questions.
Pick the one that's most important, and then we'll circle back around.
Yep. Were the survey res, were there populations in our survey results that there was more difficulty reaching? I know that we stress that being able to have the survey go out to members of the community whose first language is in English was a priority, but, so there was, there must have been some challenges, but I heard that the, the response rate was pretty good, I think, but are there populations that may not have been represented in the survey
The short answer is yes. Certain, certain community groups were more challenging to reach, and you're always limited by the response rates from communities. I will say though, compared to other districts where we do this work, the results in this survey were extremely strong and quite representative compared to, again, other, other places where we work. And as we move into the next round of stakeholder engagement, to Peter's point, we have some really specific, more intentional approaches that we're going to take to invite people into being a part of this, this process.
Leela?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I think it was affirming that academics, teachers, and staff, and diversity and inclusion were kind of the three strengths of this district. I think many of us share that perspective, and I'm glad to see that represented in the survey. I, I had a similar question to Glenn, but I'm wondering if you have the information in this moment about like which communities were not as represented as maybe they are in our district? And if that's something you need to get later, that's also fine, but would be really interested in, in a plan to reach folks, because I think, you know, like there is a perspective that folks are just like hard to reach. I think there's also a perspective that like we can do more, I think there's always more that we can do. So just curious about which communities in particular.
Yes, absolutely. In the, the stakeholder engagement, like survey results packet that we had shared, there's a breakdown of, of demographics there. I think one of the challenges is that we couldn't force people to respond to the demographics question. And so the results were seventeen percent Asian, two percent each for Hispanic, Latino, Black, multi-race, sixty-six percent white, and then seventeen percent Chong that said, "I prefer not to say," or "other." So it makes it a little bit more complex for us, but I completely agree. So based, based on those results, not quite proportional for, for the, for the community population. However, there are steps that we plan to take to be more, or be even more intentionally inclusive, both in terms of how we can invite folks to be a part of the specific focus groups, how we can then create these community meetings that, that intentionally bring folks in, and then how we can be even more intentional with, with getting the survey out to, to various communities.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I think I'm especially curious about like families with disability, or students with disabilities, because like when we talk about enrollment and choice, like that isn't the same for everyone, multilingual families. So kind of thinking more broadly about like identities and perspectives included, but appreciate that and appreciate your thoughts about going forward.
Yeah. And just a, a quick point, actually, students with disabilities and students who are receiving English language services actually were pretty large percentages. There are three hundred responses out of about twelve hundred responses for students with disabilities. So actually a larger, larger proportion there, but I think an important point for us to continue to keep in mind how we keep engaging families who are engaging in the whole variety of services in Acton-Boxborough.
All right, so I'm gonna start second questions on this side. Glenn, I know you have another one.
Yes, I do. So regarding the, one, one concern I've heard, and I have myself, is the, that the self-selection or frank, perhaps more bluntly, self-segregation of communities with school choice, I, I find that concerning. One thought I had is, so if you have the elementary schools and students with more advanced needs are more proportionally represented in that school versus that school versus that school, what is the staff allocation? Like, for instance, are there more, there must be more staff for English language learners' assistance for the schools that have more English language learner needs? Would it be easier on staff or from an administrative perspective to have the, like, over the court, like, in a hypothetical scenario where over the course of the next several years, in this hypothetical scenario where open enrollment went away, and the, perhaps the enrollment of population with advanced needs were more evenly distributed? Would that make it easier from an administrative perspective to meet student needs as opposed to students being, students being clustered in one school or the other?
You know, I think it's gonna be easier for us to answer that when we start to actually see some scenarios come forward, because it's kind of hypothetical right now. What, as I think about this, any, any scenarios we do, including the ones we have, are gonna have advantages to them and disadvantages. And there's no magic bullet that's gonna solve all of our challenges, and so I think it's important to recognize that. We already allocate like English language learners based on, you know, the number of students in schools and the relative need based on kind of the WIDA levels, where they're kind of newcomers just learning English, or whether they have been in, you know, with us for a couple of years and are progressing. One of the things we talked about last year with our elementary budget task force, and given that we were entering the consideration of a larger reorganization, we didn't do last year, but I think is safe to say is on the horizon, is really looking at like math and reading specialists and thinking about allocating those based on the need that we're seeing. And that's not, you know, demographics, that's actually how many students are at grade level and how many students need tier one and two interventions, what skills do they need, what, you know, size group is appropriate for that. That's on the horizon, where we'd be allocating that out by school regardless of what we do. I think one of the challenges we found with our specialists right now, like math and reading interventions, was when we started to look at some of our data last year during the elementary budget task force, a recommendation that came out of that was your group sizes are generally pretty small right now. And so we looked at potentially larger group sizes, but based on kind of the size of our schools and the way student groupings need to happen, if you're providing a math intervention or a reading intervention, you don't just group all of your second graders who need math intervention together, they actually have to have a need for the same skill development. Otherwise, the intervention group is, is not effective if they're all working on different skills. And when we started actually looking at the number of students in our intervention groups, we were finding that there might only be two or maybe a third student at a grade level who needed that. grade level who needed that intervention, and so we actually couldn't, based on the size of our schools now, actually increase our intervention group sizes and, you know, allow for maybe the most efficient use of staff. So, that is kind of a long answer, but it's a really, really nuanced answer. In terms of, you know, being able to get to it specifically, I think that's certainly something that, you know, DMG will talk about, and we'll be able to talk about more once we see scenarios.
All right, Adam?
I'm just gonna really quickly return to selection of first choice of school, and just remind everybody again that if you do have a, a specific need, and there's a specialized program, and that specialized program is only housed in a certain building, then again, you don't get your first choice of schools, you get placed in the school that has the program that supports you, so another thing to consider when we're looking at percentage of students who get their first choice in elementary.
Lisa?
One of the questions that I've heard a lot in the community is where the final decision for anything that does or possibly happens, and more specifically, people have asked if things would go to a town vote, and so I just wanted to ask the question to get a little bit of clarity for some of the community members around that.
So, I actually did a little bit of, you know, legal work on this, just to, I'm not a lawyer, even if I dress like one, the, but in all seriousness, when you start to look at the law, it's really important to understand what the role and responsibility of school committees versus town meeting is, and, and different boards and committees that may exist in a town. By law, school committee is actually tasked with the educational programming, which includes the number of schools, the grade configurations of schools, the educational programming of schools, so by law, school committee has that final vote. Where town meeting would be involved is, say, the school committee decided to add an additional school and needed to acquire more space, in order to acquire new buildings, you would need town approval to do that, but in terms of how you choose to configure your own schools and buildings, that is, by law, the school committee's final decision.
I'll just add to that a little bit. The other thing is that we are elected to represent the needs of all of our students. We are tasked with supporting the, the strength and the integrity of the district, this includes all of our educators, and so when we make this decision, it's not, it's not based on a popular vote, it's how do we do the right thing for everybody? And we already know this is gonna be hard, right? And, and we can tell that this is going to be challenging, there are a lot of different opinions out there right now. So, I really appreciate that question, and I think it's just something that, that we have to hold close to our hearts as we go through this, because it will be a challenge, and we have an important role here.
Vikram?
I wanted to talk about the data on slide twenty-three, that these, these numbers seem to correlate with the, not just the pandemic, but then the subsequent year upon year reduction in staff. So, the resources that are needed for English learners, as students of IPs and low-income students, have been dissolved over the past three years, you know, and I think, does, does that largely account for this drop in all three areas?
I think it's a very, very complex question to unpack, and staffing is definitely part of the conversation.
It is, right. But significant, probably, I would imagine.
It's, I think there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of judgment that would be baked into that, and this would, this is a very high-level snapshot of, of data, so I would be cautious about drawing really direct connections there, but I think it's, it's a worthwhile part of the conversation, and I think to the, to the larger question that we're, we're faced with, what are the right kinds of positions that would provide the right kind of support for kids? What are the right ways to design systems of support, sort of Peter's example before about having group sizes that have maybe one or two more students? Now you have a much more efficient way for educators or specialists to reach students, and like, what would the, the systems or structures need to be to allow for a system like that? So, staffing is a part of the, a part of the, the puzzle, but it's also how you design the larger system of supports for intervening with students.
No, I'm, I'm aware of that data, the, I think the optimal was, was five, it seemed, right? And you had to break down, like you said, specific arenas, even within mathematics and specific things.
For group sizes?
Yeah, right, right.
Typically, five to six is effective, based on the needs of students. Yeah, it depends on what tier, what skills, things like that. You know, I, just to piggyback on what I think Joe said, I think there's a lot of data in education that makes it very easy to correlate one outcome with a change that happened, and correlation is pretty easy. What I think, I, I'm always thoughtful of in educational data is, we don't necessarily have the systems in education to then figure out what the cause is, and so it has to stop short of, you know, reaching quick judgments about, well, I saw this happen here and, and that changed, because there might be six other changes that also happened at the same time that aren't accounted for in a slide, so just based on this, I think it could be easy to think that they're somehow causational, but I, I would hesitate to jump to that right now.
Yenchen?
Thank you. This is a comment, not a question. I hear the word segreg, self-segregate or segregate a lot when we talk about open enrollment. It is a big question. I think when people choose their schools for their children, some people choose the school that, with, with a, a group of people they think alike, and there are other groups that choose schools based on where their culture, or family, or, or people they look alike. I, I think in conversations, we often forget that. People choose groups that they feel like they think alike, that's not segregation, but if you choose a school based on what you look like, that's segregation. I kind of want us to like move on from that word in the following conversations, if that's okay?
Any other second questions that I've missed here? Okay, I would like to make a comment, and then I think I'd like to have us move on, so if, I think if there are any other questions that we haven't gotten to, if you can send those along, and we can pass them on to Joe.
Did you want to, since we're ahead, did you want to give any members of the, of the, an opportunity to ask a question?
We aren't actually ahead.
Oh, we're not?
Nope.
Okay. So, I don't have it in front of me, because I'm projecting.
Right, so just one thing I wanted to share, first of all, really appreciate all that has gone into this, this is a lot of great information, and two things really popped out to me. One is that I think you've, you've done a really good job of capturing where some of the tensions are, and letting us see what the various conversations are that are out there, and the, some of the hard choices that, you know, we may end up talking about, but with that also, you aren't tipping your hand, and, you know, to Andrew's point, there, the decision isn't made, we don't even know what the scenarios are yet, and it was interesting for me to read this and go, well, I can't tell any sort of approaches that you're favoring, so kudos on, kudos on leaving us still in the dark, so we can continue to work our way through this before we're really ready to bring stuff forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
All right, with that, we are moving on to our second read of the district goals. Peter, any updates you want to share with us on this?
No, at this point, there, there weren't any really significant changes that I heard asked for in the last meeting, so what you're seeing is largely the same as what was presented last time, so we're just asking for your vote to approve, if that is your inclination.
I would like to move to approve the 2025-26 district and superintendent goals as presented.
Seconded.
All right, so that was Liz with the motion, and Vikram with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that vote is unanimous. So, that brings us to the items on the consent agenda, which do not usually require discussion and are approved with one vote unless any member would like to hold an item for discussion and a separate vote. I will read each item, and if a member would like it held, please say "hold." Members do not have to have attended a meeting to vote on the minutes. So, item A, approval of ABRSC meeting minutes, eight twenty-six, twenty-five. Item B, recommendation to approve budget transfers per policy DBJ. Item C, approval of warrants is presented in the packet from September fourth, 2025. All right, seeing as nothing has been held, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, Adam gets it just out of being loud, and Lila with the second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, consent agenda, we are done with that, so we are going to transition up to room twenty-three for our school committee workshop, and now that we have some approved goals, we're gonna figure out how to make them successful.